I'd like to make some introductions first. Tonight, we're joined by our city manager, Todd Campbell. Our police chief, Jared Hart. Myself, I'm Jack Seo. I'm a city councilperson and I'm the chair of the Medical Marijuana Task Force. To my left is our esteemed mayor, Brian Morrow. Also out front here, we're joined by one of our city attorneys, Jessica Wood, from the firm of Dickinson Wright in Grand Rapids, Michigan. So, welcome you all. Also, I see in the audience, one of our other councillors, Linda Terhar. And now Dean Girbaugh just came in the room. So, thank you all for coming. And I'll mention just one more time, for those of you who may have just walked in the room, there's coffee, and decaf, and regular, and water over here. If you want, please get up and help yourselves. The way the format is going to go, Ms. Wood is going to give us probably about a 20-minute talk or so on the actual medical marijuana law in the state of Michigan, and where we are in terms of the overall laws and regulations. After that, we're going to afford people a chance to speak. And what we ask that you do is limit your time to two minutes, because we have a sizable audience. That way, everybody will get a chance to speak within a reasonable time. Also, on the back, there are question cards, questions, so you can pose a question if you like in writing, and we will have Ms. Wood answer those at the end of the meeting, from her expertise as an attorney in the field of medical marijuana. So, without further ado, Jessica, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Sorry, my back is too even.
That's all right.
I need my cheat sheets for this. So, I'm going to do my best to explain the state of medical marijuana law in Michigan to you, with the caveat that it's really unclear how this is all going to play out. So, there are a lot of great areas, and I might not be able to give you direct answers, but I'll do my best, so.
Jessica, if I may. Thank you for speaking to that microphone.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and I turned that off, because I thought it was loud enough, but. All right. Is that better?
That's up.
Okay. Okay, so, because the city is considering medical marijuana, the focus tonight of this presentation will be on this particular law, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, and related issues. And just so you are aware, it's really important to keep it straight, because there's actually four different statutes or laws in Michigan relating to marijuana. And so, you hear people talking about marijuana, and they often use terms interchangeably, and they're very different laws. So, just so you're aware, and there's just a picture of downtown Grand Rapids. So, marijuana laws in Michigan, so, the first one to be enacted was the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, or MMMA, of 2008. And it dealt exclusively with patients and caregivers. It was sort of short-sighted. It didn't really establish any sort of business regulatory scheme. So, it was very limited in nature. And so, the legislature soon realized that they needed to do more. So, they enacted the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MMFLA, which is going to be the primary focus of this discussion tonight, in 2016, and really tried to address the regulatory and business aspects of medical marijuana. Then came the Medical Marijuana Tracking Act, MMTA, which really just required things of the state, in terms of tracking the transfer of marijuana, medical marijuana. Primarily, again, emphasis on the state, so not a huge concern for local government units. And then, most recently, you're probably all aware, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, or MRTMA, was just voted in by the voters of the state of Michigan in 2018. And that has to do with recreational use, or sometimes it's referred to as adult use. So, that's limited to people who are 21-years of age or older. And it's different. So, again, there's recreational, and then medical, and they're very different. The laws are very different. The terms are not the same, the requirements are not the same, and so, it's important that when you think about this, you think about it specifically in the scope of the MMFLA, which is what the city's considering right now, the medical marijuana statute. The MMFLA did a couple of things. It expanded the types of medical marijuana facilities permitted. Again, the one its predecessor dealt exclusively with caregivers and patients. It was very limited. It established a licensing scheme similar to the scheme that the state implements for liquor licenses. And the regulatory scheme regarding primary caregivers under the initial statute does remain in effect. So, it didn't override that, it was just added to the scheme. So, unlike the recreational law, the MMFLA required municipalities, and I'm not sure everybody knows what a municipality is, but it's a city and a village, and a township, depending on your view. Some people don't think townships are. So, it requires municipalities to opt in, in order to participate in the regulation of medical marijuana. That's the opposite of the recreational law, which requires you to opt out, or else it's assumed that you're in, and you're open for business. So, if you were to do nothing, then no state licenses would be issued. You have to opt in, in order to have medical marijuana in your city. The state license may not be issued unless the municipality has adopted an ordinance authorizing that specific type of license. And we'll talk about the different types of licenses under the statute in a minute. If the municipality opts in, it may authorize any specific or all license types, and may limit the number of each license type. So, you have within their ability to limit, again, the different license types. You can just allow some and not others. And you can limit the number, or you can just say, you know, through the process of natural selection, they'll limit themselves. There are five license types available under the MMFLA. There's the grower license, and these are sort of self-explanatory. The names really suggest what they are. So, the grower license, different classes, and those just primarily go to the issue of how many plants you're allowed to grow. There's processor. And to be a little bit more specific about that definition, processors purchase marijuana from a grower and extract the resin from the marijuana, or create a marijuana-infused product for sale and transfer in packaged form to a provisioning center. So, that's specifically what that type of licensee does. Secure transporter, they store marijuana and transport it between facilities for a fee. So, that's a different type of license. And something that you might want to note is that you cannot prohibit secure transporters from going through your city. You don't have to allow them to locate here, but you are not allowed to prohibit them from passing through. A provisioning center is essentially a retailer, so it's called a retailer, and they're under the recreational law. So, just what you'd think, a shop where somebody can go and purchase the marijuana. And then, safety compliance facility is a licensee that receives the marijuana from a facility or primary caregiver, and tests it for contaminants and other substances. So, they do the testing to make sure that the purity is there. And actually, the state really does enforce that, and there have already been some violations, and fines issued for processors and growers that are not complying with the threshold of safety that they require. So, those are the five license types. The state did issue rules, and unlike the recreational statute, where when they issued rules, they came up with several new types of licenses that we're supposed to figure out, they just limited, they left medical as is. So, these are your different options. So, when it was enacted, the Medical Marijuana Act imposed a 3% tax on each provisioning center's gross retail receipts. But then, as soon as the recreational law went into effect, the 3% tax has expired. So, that no longer is in play. And so, these next two bullet points actually sort of talk about the recreational aspect. So, this is a mouthful, but the percent of the municipal portion of the excise tax collected has been reduced from 25% under the medical act to 15% under the recreational act, and is paid only after the state has compensated for all of its expenses. And also, under the recreational act, until 2022, $20 million annually is provided to the FDA to conduct clinical trials researching the treatment of U.S. Armed Services veterans. So, if you wonder where the money is going now that recreational is legal, that's what's So, back to the MMFLA for a minute. If a municipality opts in with an ordinance that does not specify a cap, in other words, a limiting number, on the types or number of each type of license, then LARA will consider applications for any of the types and any number. So, in other words, LARA is the state, I'm sorry if I didn't say that before, it's the licensing agency at the state level. So, if you don't limit it locally, and you have opted in, they're going to assume that you're saying the sky's the limit. They're going to grant it. The burden is on the city to put any sort of limitations on the number or the type. Otherwise, they're going to approve all of them that meet their requirements. A state license is required before a facility is authorized to operate, though, even if a municipality enacts an ordinance. So, that's a required step, is that the applicant go get a state license as well. They can't operate just using a local license. Potential revenues. So, sometimes people say, "Well, why would a city allow this?" And there are a vast number of reasons, but one of them is that they're looking at potential revenues. The annual administrative fee, which is non-refundable, that they can charge not more than $5,000 per licensee to defray administrative and enforcement costs. So, that's annually, too. Now, it's supposed to be not more than, and there is supposed to be some relationship between the fee being charged and their actual expenses, so. Property tax revenues. Businesses may end up using commercial properties that are either vacant or off the rule. So, it's a way to bring some properties back to life and put them back on the tax roll. And then, again, if you end up opting in under the recreational statute, which is not being considered here, is my understanding at this point, there's a 10% tax imposed on retailers that can trickle down to the municipality as well. So, what can a municipality regulate in their ordinance when it comes to medical marijuana? They can regulate the time, place, and manner of operation of these marijuana establishments. And the statute really doesn't give us much guidance in terms of what we can do. They make it very clear, though, that what we can do, we cannot regulate the purity of the product, the pricing, and we can't conflict with any of the, anything in the statute, or any rules that they implement. So, you know, so we always have to look to the rules, the statute, to make sure we're not messing with pricing or purity. Otherwise, they don't give us much guidance. The state must approve and issue a license to a proposed marijuana establishment that is not within an area zoned exclusively for residential use, and is not within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing K-12 public or private school. So, in other words, this goes back to my point about, unless you prohibit it, and they can find something in your ordinance that tells them not to issue the license, and these requirements are met, the state is going to issue the license. So, there's a presumption of issuance. In terms of regulation, though, the municipality can require special land use approval, and may impose buffers. And I'll get more into that in a minute. So, if you decide to do this, and you enact an ordinance, there's some big discussions to be had about how to process these. And just some highlights here, the city would have to create an application process, and decide how they're going to process the applications fairly. There's a number of different ways to do that, and we've been involved in several different processes. Some are far more complicated than others. You can do it on a first-come, first-served basis, or you can create a competitive process, where you try, you set forth the criteria, apply it to all of the applicants, and then decide who is best suited to operate the business within your community, trying to be as objective as possible. So, a number of different ways to do that, and we've seen it sort of across the spectrum in terms of simplicity versus very, very complicated processes for evaluation. Unlike the recreational statute, where the state has said, "If you put a cap on the number that you're going to permit, you must have a competitive process," there's no similar language in the medical statute. So, you can do it pretty much however you want to, but you have to be careful that you're doing it, you're not being arbitrary about the way that you process the applications. You can imagine how important it might be to an applicant, though, that it's an objective process, that it's fair, and you can also probably imagine how important it is that you determine fairly where they are in the place in line, right? Because there are probably limited properties where this will be allowed, and so, the order in which their application is considered is of utmost importance to the applicant. Caps. So, this is something you're allowed to do, and by caps, I simply mean putting a limit on the number of establishments that you're going to allow. And that's, again, totally within the discretion of the municipality. There's a couple of ways to do this. You can straight-out say, "We only want three provisioning centers." Or, you can sort of use the process of natural selection, which is what I call it, where, you know, using your land use process, and just as a practical matter, there are only so many properties that are going to be suitable, and it's going to limit itself. So, there's different ways of doing it, and just accept them on a first-come, first-served basis. And then, buffers are another tool that the municipality can consider. Do you want to impose buffer requirements between facilities? Do you want buffers between adjacent municipalities? Do you want buffers? I mean, you can really go crazy with the buffers, and I've seen some examples of that. Just separation requirements for religious institutions, substance use disorder programs, parks and playgrounds, et cetera. So, there's a number of different ways to create buffers around areas that you think shouldn't have this type of facility included. Again, other people don't have any buffers at all, except for those imposed by the statute. It just really varies. So, there's two types of ordinances that we recommend to do this. We don't like to see them combined, because zoning ordinances are processed very differently than regulatory and police ordinances. So, we recommend that you do them separately, and that you address things like instructions, licenses, and the application process in your regulatory/policice ordinance, that's what they're called, as opposed to your zoning ordinance, which takes on a life of its own, and involves the land use process, and in which you can designate permissible zones, and you can dictate whether something is permitted either by right, or only pursuant to special land use approval. So, you have a lot of discretion within your zoning ordinance in terms of locations. So, again, very different aspects being addressed by each ordinance, but we like to draft them so that they work together. In terms of the process, and how this would all play out, again, kind of difficult to time this in a way that serves both the needs of the municipality, as well as, you know, in fairness to the applicant, but it seems to run most smoothly if you do something like this. The applicant might form their business and obtain their financing, and then go to the state to obtain their pre-qualification. So, phase one, there are two phases of qualification at the state level. So, they go there first, to the state, to get pre-qualified. Once they receive that, they come to the local unit, and make sure that they can comply with the ordinance. They go through that process, and then they apply for the state's phase-two approval. They say, "Look, state, we went to the local unit of government, got our approval, we're back to you now, for you to give us an actual operational license." Then they go back to the locality to get the permitting and construction license, and open up shop. So, there's a lot of back and forth in terms of how to do this, and to keep it flowing. Something that's interesting is that the state is only going to process applications from those who have a medical license for the first 48 months after they start to receive applications. And so, those who have a medical license somewhere in the state are going to be at an advantage over those who just have recreational. So, it's likely that you'll see medical license holders come through the process first. So, that, in a nutshell, that's medical marijuana, and the Facilities Licensing Act. And I'm not sure how much time I just used up, but happy to talk about any of these things in more detail. Answer any questions you might have.
Well, let me say this. The way the agenda was going to work was, we were going to allow people to come forward and speak for up to three minutes maximum, just to give everybody an equal opportunity to have their say. What we would entertain is that during the time you speak, we'd welcome you to express your point of view on the whole question of medical marijuana. After that, or during that time, if you'd like, there are question cards back there. You can write out a question, and at the end of the public speaking period, we will have Ms. Wood answer any of the questions that she can, for those of you who want to stay around and wait for that to occur. Also, you need to know that we have completed a medical marijuana questionnaire. There, I believe, some on the back table there. You're welcome to pick one up and drop one off with your opinions about medical marijuana. We ask that you complete it in its entirety, to help us fairly understand where we are. And I guess one thing I didn't do with the outcome was to let our mayor have a moment or two to speak about why this Medical Marijuana Task Force was formed, and what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you, Mr. Seo. If I may, just for clarity's sake, the survey that's on the back table will also be online for the next two weeks. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, if you have friends, neighbors, community stakeholders who you know are passionate, interested in this issue, please refer them to the city website, and encourage them to fill out this flyer, questionnaire, excuse me. So, real quick, the genesis for this, of course, is that medical marijuana and the marijuana issue more broadly has, well, things have really evolved in the past decade, from the 2008 vote in favor of medical marijuana, to where we are today, 2019, almost a year after the voters of Michigan overwhelmingly approved recreational marijuana. So, because of that, I thought it was appropriate and prudent to convene a group of stakeholders to vet this particular issue, medical marijuana, and determine whether it's appropriate, whether it's appropriate to move forward and allow certain businesses and enterprises to exist in our city. And so, I set up a group, and you can see the placards up on the dais here this evening. Those are the individuals who serve on the Medical Marijuana Working Group. Many of them could not be here tonight, they send their regrets. Of course, Mr. Seo, Councilmember Seo is the chairperson of that group, and they've spent the better part of six months now speaking to experts, and sort of doing case studies of other municipalities, to determine whether it's a good fit for Celine. And so, here we are this evening to engage with you all, the people we represent, to understand your questions, concerns, and to solicit your feedback. So, in two weeks' time, when the survey is removed from the city website, and we're no longer accepting comments from our public, I expect the group will reconvene, and in very short order, make a formal recommendation to city council. So, if you're interested in this issue, please stay tuned. There will be more, much more of a tangible nature to report in the very near future. I guess the only other thing I would add, Chairman Seo, is, at this point, we would not only be encouraging people to voice their sentiments regarding medical marijuana, but if they had a question for our city attorney, Jessica Wood, on this issue, I think we would be delighted to entertain those as well. So, unless you have something further, unless our attorney has something, or our police chief, I guess we would invite people to the podium, to share thoughts, or to raise questions. And I would note, our attorney did an excellent job, and we wanted to provide you all with a baseline of objective information this evening, before we solicited your thoughts and feedback on this important and timely issue. So, anything else?
The only thing I will say is this, there may be some divergent opinions tonight. We ask that you listen quietly and courteously to others, even if you don't share their sentiments. And with that, I guess we'd open the microphone for anybody who would wish to come forward and speak.
Use this one?
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
Can I move it somewhere?
Yeah.
Can I move it towards you guys then?
Sure, that's good. Where it usually is.
Excellent. Hey, guys, thank you so much for having this discussion today, and I appreciate the time to talk to you guys. I'm a resident of Celine. For the last nine years, I've been building a medical marijuana dispensary in Ann Arbor with my partners. We have been doing this in Ann Arbor, and helping the state with some of their laws as well. I just want to talk about, I don't know what Celine needs. I know that what I've seen working in this industry for a long time is being able to help people, and seeing them go off their opiates, seeing them cure their cancers, seeing them get off of whatever they're taking for their arthritises, for lupus, Lyme disease, fibromyalgia. There's so many different ailments, autoimmune diseases, as this is helping people for. What I suggest Celine looks into is finding a dispensary that is a community-based dispensary, that has some sort of outreach, that's looking at things. And if I may, what we've been doing, we've had one study already published in the Journal of Pain, a prominent medical journal. We're doing studies with the University of Michigan. We're doing international research studies. We've got two more that are going to be published here in the future. We raised over 67,000 pounds of food last year for food gatherers. We've probably surpassed 250,000 pounds of food over the last several years as a business. And we're looking for more things. We're working with PCAP, Prisoners Creative Arts Project. We're working with Open Heart Magic at the Children's Hospital in Ann Arbor. And I really recommend, when you're vetting out dispensaries, if you decide to have them in the city of Celine, to find the establishments that are going to care about communities, that are going to care about educating people, and letting them know what works, and not just trying to sling cannabis to people. I think that's one of the most important things. And then, I also finally want to recommend, or, you know, ask you to reach out to me, and ask me any questions if you even might have any. I've been doing this a long time. It's been stressful. I went through the vetting process. We have our medical license, and as an owner, that was very excruciating. I know they've lessened those requirements now, as far as how much they're asking you to provide, and how much you have to have in your bank and whatnot. But that's, I welcome you guys to ask me anything that you might need to know.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Please.
You guys, the task force has been around for six months. Is there a report that shows what you found, what you looked into, who you talked to, about any of the information that you may have found during the past six months?
What I have are recorded minutes of our meetings. Basically, what we've done is tried to educate ourselves, in terms of speaking to various, well, a couple of different provisioning centers already have been here to speak with us. We've talked to a patient who's a medical marijuana consumer. We've talked to attorneys, and that's where we're having the public forum tonight, finally to hear what the public has to say about having a provisioning center, or any other kind of a license, dealing with medical marijuana right here in the city of Celine, because to date, we have opted out. So, we formally said, "We want to sit on the sidelines and watch and see what happens."
So, is that report of who you've talked to going to be available for us to read, or... I basically don't know whether the positives or negatives of that report are good or bad, or how that affects the outcome.
So, here would be, here would be my expectation, when the working group finalizes their work and makes a formal recommendation to council, that document and recommendation would, of course, be made public. And I would expect some specifics and details in terms of who was spoken to, what information was gathered, and why they reached the conclusion that they did. So, at the time when, at the point when a formal recommendation is submitted to council for review, consideration, and debate, that information would be made available to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Hess, and this is All New. I'm over 80-years-old. I have arthritis, neuritis, and many other things. And I think it's very interesting. My sister was 15-years older than I, and she had taken OxyContin. It was a mess. And she ended up with taking a Brownie at night. And she ended up with taking a Brownie at night before she went to bed, and it helped many things. There are good things, but there also are very big concerns. When you said, Jessica, that you have to be a medical dispensary before you can be a fun one?
No, just to clarify.
Whatever.
The state has indicated, this is a state thing, not a local thing, that it's going to process, for the first 48 months, it's only going to process the applications of those who have a medical license already.
Okay. Now, the gentleman that just got up, he said that he works in Ann Arbor, and they went through the medical thing. Does that mean if they would apply to Celine, they wouldn't have to go through the months of medical prior to recreational?
Well, right now, the city is not considering recreational.
Well, I know, but that's...
Okay.
I think her question was, the gentleman who spoke earlier already has his state license. So if the city of Celine decided to opt in and he wanted to bring his enterprise to Celine, he doesn't have to jump through any state hoops again.
Well, he, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the state, but it's going to be a lot faster for him because he's already up and running. So he would need to get a local license and show us that he was already licensed at the state level and met all of their requirements. The reason I'm hesitant to say he doesn't ever have to go back to the state is because they're constantly changing their requirements. But suffice it to say, I think he would be way ahead in the process.
As you said, trucks may deliver, and the city cannot prohibit trucks. But can they prohibit with a sign ordinance that you can't have weed for fun and park it on a corner for two days until the law says you have to move it in 48 hours? Can they, in fact, prohibit the advertisement on the outside of the truck with this particular request?
Right. Well, excuse me, as I mentioned, they haven't given us much guidance about that, other than to say, I'm looking for the specific language.
Well, that's a question. I think I only got three minutes.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you're going to be lenient or not.
Yeah, and I'm happy to address that later. No, you raise a good issue. Couple of things come to mind right away, so if I can talk beyond a few minutes.
Please.
Okay.
And that's basically what it's about, is, you know, because it is home. And they have them in Ypsilanti, they're going to have them in Ann Arbor. The world will not come to an end if we don't have one for a while. And as anything is new, sometimes you have people say they'd like to do a do-over because maybe that wasn't, you know, that was concerning. So in a way, I'm kind of glad that the council has put a stay on it to see what the outer limits are happening. But I think it's beneficial as far as for not necessarily having to have something of prescription, but I think there is merit in it. But as you always, there are people who want to take advantage. We had a healthcare at the senior center, and Celine Pharmacy had a tablet that I'm sure was legal. And like for at night, you could put drops on your tongue or something. But anyway, it is something that I think it can be beneficial if moderation, like anything eating too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess.
Hello, I have a question, I guess, from Ms. Wood and the task force. I'm curious what you have experienced, or the task force, as far as signage and the different locations as far as industrial, commercial, downtown? Because I think, like the woman before us was mentioning, I think to have downtown, Ms. Wood was referring to different standards, suppose, for the application process, to have downtown signage be a little bit more conservative. And then, once you get out, say, towards industrial parks, you know, a little bit more lenient as far as advertising, what you can see. So I'm curious if you all have come across any issues with that or...
Specifically with regard to signage?
Right.
Not yet, not so far, although signage ordinances are really complicated in their own right right now because of a Supreme Court case that made it very difficult for municipalities to do almost anything about the content of signage. You know, if you're familiar with that case, but it actually impacts signage across the board, not just marijuana. So as I indicated before, we are allowed to regulate the time, place, and manner of all things related to this. It's not clear yet what that means in terms of signage and how far we're able to go in terms of regulation.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming within the different zoning districts, you could apply different zoning standards, or is that still too far?
Right. Well, just like anything that goes through your special land use process, different standards apply. And I don't know, is the city planner here or anybody from your planning department here tonight who could speak to that?
No staff members, but a close to a working majority of planning commissioners are here.
Okay, okay. So the land use process is pretty complicated in its own right?
Sure.
And each zone does have its own standards. And so if the city were to require applicants to go through the land use process, they would go through the standards just like anybody else trying to locate.
Okay.
So that makes sense. So they would be different per zone, if that's what your question is.
Yeah, right. Yes.
I think that's what we're trying to get at with the survey as well.
Yeah.
What is the community voice have to say about the location?
Yeah. And I think, you know, and I think it's a great, I think some more specific questions regarding, you know, that neon, neon, big green, you know what I mean? But to just kind of indicate signage, I don't know if a lot of people are going to really know what that means. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's James McDonald. I'm a business owner in downtown. I own a holistic wellness shop, Earth Elements. And we carry, you know, medicinal holistic herbs, and we've often thought about carrying cannabis as one of our offerings if it were permitted, because we think it would be very natural and organic to what we already do. I've lived in Celine for about 10 years, and I've worked in Celine probably even longer. And so I would encourage, you know, as you mull this over and decide if you're going to allow medical marijuana, look a step further, because I think Celine has a reputation for sometimes being two steps behind. Because I think that by the time we catch up to recreational marijuana usage, it's going to be in Walmart, it's going to be in, you know, sarcasm bushes. I mean, it's going to be all over. I know this year, in the last six months, we've, in downtown, business owners have seen about a 10% to 15% drop in revenue because there's not traffic downtown. And I think we're losing business to Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti because we don't have a diverse selection of businesses downtown. And I really believe that a cannabis offering in any business that either exists or a new business that's developing is going to, you know, just bring more foot traffic. And then access is another issue. Some people aren't capable of going and getting the medical marijuana cards and all of those kind of nuances that go with medical marijuana. I think you're missing the boat, and I think that there's going to be, you know, a loss of revenue when Ann Arbor blows the doors off of recreational and we're still back in medical marijuana land. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
I've moved into Celine. It's going to be my second year living here. My husband was here for many years before me. We moved here together. He lived here before, and I moved in with him. I am a medical marijuana patient. I suffer from a couple of different chronic illnesses, as well as I was involved in a hit-and-run accident, so I've got permanent damage from that as well. I will say, since I got my license, I have stopped going to the doctor as much. I went from probably 15 pills a day to like three pills a day. I'm able to hang out with my kids more. A lot of the medicine I was taking, I couldn't drive on. It made me sicker. I wasn't spending any quality time. I've got four children. And the quality of life has gotten significantly better from it for many reasons. For me, the issue of it being here is I have to drive 20 minutes, a half an hour, to get the medicine that I'm looking for. It's hard for me to make time to do that. It's hard for me to physically go back and forth like that. And so if I had a place really close to home that I could go to, a community place like this gentleman was saying, who I know you very well, by the way, you're a company, I know exactly what place you're at. And so it'd be really nice if I could go 10, 15 minutes and get the help that I needed and be a part of a community there versus going a half an hour away or something like that.
Very good.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to be back. I'm Randy Richardville. Some of you may know that I served for 14 years in the Michigan Legislature, and I was blessed enough to represent the city of Celine from 2006 until 2014 and got to know quite a few people in the community and around the community. While I was in the Senate, I, we considered what had happened in 2008 with the vote of the recreational, excuse me, the Medical Marijuana Act that came, that you spoke about that came out on the ballot and I think was very poorly administered. In fact, it took nine years before the state came up with the licensing and regulatory authority, came up with the regulations to kind of keep an eye on those things. In the meantime, some 30,000 licenses were issued to people throughout the state. So they started doing something called caregiving, where they are allowed to serve six other clients and grow, I think it's a dozen plants per client, so 72 total. And yet, it's not very well regulated, and some law enforcement folks have told me that they estimate above 90% of those people are involved in some kind of illegal activity in terms of distribution and what they do with it. It may be exaggerated, but I've seen a lot of abuses myself. While I was the chairman, or, excuse me, while I was the leader of the Michigan Senate, I was also the chairman of the Government Operations Committee. And I had all the marijuana laws put in front of my committee, and for a couple of years, I listened to people throughout the state, like the young lady that spoke just a few minutes ago about epileptic children that used to have 30 seizures a day and now have two or three a month, or people with cancer, people with other kinds of illnesses, primarily senior citizens, and that there is a truly remarkable medical marijuana alternative to medicine that is today just beginning to, you know, be regulated, and that's what you're considering. Then there's the recreational marijuana ballot proposal that passed last year. Some of you might know, I was hired by the Smart Approach to Marijuana Organization out of Washington, DC, to be the spokesperson against recreational marijuana. I believe that that law, which had over 6,000 words in it, and the voters only got to see 100 words, there were a lot more potential abuses and potential for distribution to children and younger people that have underdeveloped or their brains are not fully developed yet, and that that was a real problem. So I spoke against recreational. I also, like I said, see very many abuses of the Medical Marijuana Act that allows the growers to take care of caregivers. That's why out of those 30,000 people with licenses, so few of them went through the rigorous process of actually trying to get a real medical marijuana license, because they couldn't show where they attained their cash assets, et cetera, et cetera. So I've only got a handful of clients that I advise in this arena. One of them is a group of three people that own pharmacies today. They are registered pharmacists, have been practicing for years. When I looked at the city of Celine and the reputation that it has as being a clean-cut, do-it-right kind of city, I recommended to them that they contact and stay in touch with this city so that they could potentially attain a license here. They've gone through the qualification process, the pre-qualification process with the state, got a couple more pieces of paperwork to do. But it's a totally different kind of dispensary than what you might see in other cities, where they're, they've been handing things out for years that haven't been regulated, whereas here, we've got people that handle inventory, handle pharmaceuticals, and have been doing it successfully for a number of years. So I'm advising them to make an application should you decide to open up your doors and opt in, because I think that's the kind of community that you are, that you want to take care of, those senior citizens, those people out here that have a legitimate need and don't have to drive to another city. So you'll be hearing from us somewhat shortly. And I know I took more than three minutes, but I was in the Senate, and sometimes we do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Hello, I'm a Celine resident. My family moved here in 1971. I lived here from '78 to '82 and then moved away, and I've moved back and been here for about five years. And I'm an advocate of medical and residential use. And so I'm, one thing that puzzled me is, I'd love to know how the city or the residents voted, both for the medical in 2008 and the most recent recreational, to gauge whether or not this community, what the voting record was of the residents. And that, I think that should help guide some decision-making in this topic.
All right, thank you. We've already, as a committee, we've looked at that. And in both cases, the, there was an overwhelming majority of people who voted in favor of both of the regulations. What we're really trying to consider is, and I think as Ms. Wood stated, state's been a long time in trying to sort out the regulations and laws, and we, as a city, have sat on the sidelines trying to watch, and we don't want to jump in too quickly before things have gelled. And there is some really, some firm guidance for us at the state level to help us through this, what we see as potentially a difficult situation if we jump aboard too early without knowing exactly what we're doing. So that's why we're going through this vetting process. That's why we're listening to what people have to say. That's why we're listening to a number of different experts come from various points of view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't it 60% in both cases? Over 60%? Was there over 60% in both cases?
I don't know.
Hi, good evening. I'm Julie, and I'm a lifelong resident of Celine. I work for an attorney, and our niche is helping alcoholics and addicts, either using the judicial system to steer them to recovery or help clean up wreckage once they've found a solid recovery path. I can tell you that I see alcohol destroy lives beyond what any of us can imagine. Opiates are another whole other game, ballgame. My opinion is I like what Mr. McDonald has to say about thinking ahead. I think medical is a step behind, considering where recreation is going to be at. And I definitely like what Jim Salim said about looking at community-based companies putting back into the, who are interested in investing back into the company versus making a buck. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening. I am a Celine resident and a Celine commercial property owner. My wife and I purchased the Celine Reporter Building, which we spent a year and a half renovating, and now we've closed our store and we've turned it over to rock, paper, scissors, as many of you know. We have vacant space on our second floor, and we probably have the biggest power consumption building in the city, potentially, in that small footprint with an open second floor. And I haven't heard any conversation tonight about use of the vacant facilities for things such as growing or testing. And I would strongly advise that you think about that. We purchased this building with the intent of opening a marijuana dispensary, and we decided to sit by the sidelines and wait to see what would happen, and we've gone with retail space. Our building is zoned pretty much whatever we want to do, D1, I believe. So I think it's probably qualifying to do a growing facility or test facility. So please consider that. It's an empty vacant space right now. We would like to use it and support the city and support those who need the medical marijuana. My wife is a member, card-carrying marijuana user. If she had not started with the medical marijuana, I don't think we would have been able to open the store or renovate the building. With her medical conditions, she was not leaving the house, and we lost her healthcare coverage, and we tried medical marijuana. And it was the first thing that allowed her to reduce her pain level and sleep through the night. And she's now, you know, out and about and functioning again. And she's now, you know, out and about and functioning again. And it was amazing to see that transformation. When your medicine is denied because you can't afford it, but you can't afford marijuana and you see that, it's life-changing. So please consider both of those.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, we do have, yeah, come forward, young man, but we also have, Mr. Campbell, do you want to bring the question card forward?
Anyone who wants to, certainly if you have to ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if you want a card or you want to, you have to read the question. So you know, if you decide, just raise your hand. I think we've got one.
Please come forward.
Yes, please.
So I'm not that well-informed on the subject, I'm going to be honest, but I do have a couple of questions. I just Googled in the back while people were talking. So first of all, this is for you, Ms. Wood. How would you regulate if recreational use is passed? How would you regulate THC? Because that's the component in the drug that makes people feel the highest sensation.
Okay, so recreational, the law was passed. So do you mean here locally if they were to adopt it?
Yeah, locally.
Okay. And again, I don't think they're considering recreational at this point, but the recreational statute, just switching gears for a minute, has definitions that exclude certain levels of THC from the definition. And that's why you see CBD oils all over the place because they don't contain enough for it to fall within the definition to be regulated.
Gotcha.
So it wouldn't really be up to the locals to do that, to make that distinction.
In fact, aren't we prohibited from even?
That's right, we are. In terms of the, right, below a certain level. Above a certain level of THC, it does fall within the definition. And of course, we would, the only folks who would know whether it was above or below the level would be the safety compliance facility. So your question is very astute. It's really sort of above our pay grade in terms of it's something that the state would regulate.
Okay, so like the dispensaries would have to have it below the whatever cap they set for that THC component?
Well, no. For it to be regulated as marijuana, it can be higher than the percentage. But for it to like, it be CBD oil, for example, has such a low THC percentage in it that it can't be regulated as marijuana.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So if it either falls within the definition and gets regulated like all the other marijuana through the state and locally, or it falls beneath the threshold after testing and we can't regulate it?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Have any questions, Mr. Campbell?
I can actually answer this one.
Sure.
So the question is, did Celine opt out of recreational marijuana? And the answer is yes, currently they have, or we have.
Actually, it's sort of the reverse for recreational. We have not opted in.
Nope.
No, I'm sorry.
Todd's right.
I'm sorry.
It's so confusing. That's okay.
You opt out of recreational?
Right, right.
Opt in for, I'm sorry.
Right. And it's super confusing and I think it's interesting though because it places the default in the opposite way. So currently, my understanding is that you currently opted out, correct? But you can undo that.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And if I may, because the recreational marijuana has been referenced a number of times this evening by some of our commentators, so I want to address that. So it is correct. Subsequent to the November 2018 vote, City Council agreed to opt out. And I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think the genesis for that was to allow the state time to develop the necessary regulatory framework before we considered essentially allowing it. But that is an issue that we will revisit as a city council and discuss as the necessary regulatory policies are put into place. And I would note, piggybacking on something that Chairman CEO said and a couple of our, the members of the public addressed this as well. The city of Celine in 2008 with medical marijuana and then the city of Celine in 2018 with recreational marijuana voted overwhelmingly in favor of both ballot proposals. Now, I'll tell you, because I've prided myself on being very honest and forthright with the people I represent since my tenure as mayor began, I was, I voted against both of those proposals. I thought, as was referenced by Senator Richardville, in particular, the 2008 proposal was terribly written. But my position did not prevail. And I believe in the, personally, I believe in the sanctity of elections. And if you'll pardon a really bad joke from Mayor Ed Koch, who's one of my heroes, he used to be fond of saying, "The voters have spoken and tongue in cheek, now they should be punished." Meaning that there are consequences to elections. And I think that's just something that I thought was important to note and worth considering because the constituents that we serve spoke and spoke very emphatically twice, in 2008 and 2018, on these issues. And that is a component, or that will be a component, in our decision-making process on both of these issues.
I will say though, as you've seen from Ms. Wood's presentation, it's a complex question. It's not a simple yes or no question. Here's the question about where and when and how many and what kind and on and on and on. So those are all the things we have to consider, I think, very carefully before we enter into any kind of an agreement to move forward. So anybody else would care to address us?
I just, real quick.
Sure.
Ann Arbor's had the law for almost a decade now. We haven't seen anything go crazy in Ann Arbor over the last almost decade with the medical marijuana there. So I don't, I don't see how, that's like a litmus test right there for cannabis in the community. So no questions, just a statement?
Yep.
So I've lived in Celine about 20 years and I, as I'm listening to this, I just wanted to say first, I appreciate that people are being careful. You know, you don't want to, you know, mess up your thing here. We have an awfully nice community. But I think the danger with something like this is it becomes a not-in-my-backyard sort of thing. And I think that is the wrong way to look at this. I think we have to be very careful of that. I think we as a group of people said that we don't think this is a bad thing anymore. It's not like it was a long time ago. It's not a bad thing. And I think a lot of the people that have spoken have very eloquently explained how it can be a good thing. And I think, I think maybe we need to embrace that and not let it be, you know, something that they do in Ann Arbor where people do naughty stuff and then people do bad stuff in Ypsilanti and we do good stuff here. I think that's a dangerous line if we're not careful there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Please, come forward, sir.
Can I just add a quick question?
I can't hear you from back there though.
I just had a question.
Would you please come to the microphone, sir? Thank you. I appreciate it. That way, this is being recorded as well and that way we can allow other people to view this as, didn't come your time.
I was just coming to, I just came to listen, but I've heard some rather extraordinary claims as to the medical benefits of marijuana. I didn't know that it cured cancer, but my question is, does anybody who applies for a license for one of these medical dispensaries, do they have to have any kind of medical training?
That would be a question for the state and perhaps the gentleman who knows, who runs the business himself. But I'm not intimately familiar with the requirements of someone who gets a license to provide a dispensary service. So that doesn't have to do with anything that we would be regulating, just so you know, that's something the state would regulate.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but to my knowledge, to obtain the necessary permits from the state to own and operate a dispensary, you do not need to have a medical degree.
No, you don't have to have a medical degree. Our particular dispensary in Ann Arbor does have a chief medical officer and he's a doctor.
Okay.
And he doesn't do licenses with the state to get your card. But he's here for consultations and he's the one who's doing the studies with U of M. Let me just point out if I may.
Would you come forward, sir?
Yeah, well, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
There's a lot of misinterpretations or misinformed things over the years about cannabis. Everybody has an endocannabinoid system in their bodies, like their lymphatic system, like their central nervous system. And scientists discovered the endocannabinoid system in the late 80s, early 90s, and it's filled with receptors in our brains all around our bodies. Cannabis is non-lethal, so there is no lethal overdose level with cannabis. It is natural. You cannot die from taking it. The only way you can die is if you ate so much it filled up your entire body and no one's going to do that. So I guess my point is, is that to have a medical license to be able to distribute cannabis, I don't know that it's really that necessary because it is such a, kind of a harmless plant in a way. People can take too much of it and obviously if they do, there's, some people here have probably done that and it's not a good experience, but you're not going to die from it. It's better than taking opiates in my opinion because cannabis stays in your body for 30 days after you smoke it, even if you stop. Opiates, we flush them out in three to five days because it's poison and our body wants to rid it from our body. So that's something that I just wanted to point, I could talk all day about it.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, more or less, but I thought, I thought one problem with vaping was that the deaths associated with vaping had something to do with the active ingredient marijuana. I might be wrong.
I think it has more of the mechanical thing with your lungs.
Can I speak on it? Can I speak on it?
Please.
So it was a vitamin E acetate that they found in the cartridges. These were kind of regulated to different areas of our country in the black market. And all the stuff in Michigan right now is tested and our vendors in particular don't use any vitamin E acetate. So those are very, those situations are occurring in our country in just a few places because of the black market. And I think that's why we need regulation. That's why we need these tests so that people can be protected from it.
Thank you.
So thanks, Jim.
Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Hey.
Good evening.
I work at a shop in Ann Arbor, right next to U of M campus. Been there eight years. It's safe, clean. We help a lot of people and I'm in favor of it.
At a medical marijuana shop, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Provision, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please.
My name's Donna and my wife spoke earlier. We bought a building here in Celine, the old Reporter Building. And part of why we did that was that I had had the experience I had with opiates and with my health and I finally, and I have a degree in chemical dependency and mental illness. I had a CAC through the state of Michigan. I worked at Myland Federal Prison doing residential drug treatment. I ran the program at EMU in Washtenaw County Courts for drug education. So I have a lot of experience with both sort of the old thought version of this is a gateway drug to what we know now, which is countries like Israel have been testing and it is provided through a pharmacy there. And we've been so far behind because we demonized it that we're just now coming up, you know, to a place where lots of other countries have already come to. I got sick and lost my health insurance and ended up trying medical marijuana, which was kind of like the last thing in the world I ever thought I would do as a drug education and drug treatment counselor. But I know an awful lot about medical marijuana and even as students at EMU. If I had to choose, I would tell young people to do something other than drink. That is far worse for them than a lot of the other things they could be doing, including recreational marijuana. And still somehow, somehow we're behind the ball again. But when I moved here, we bought the building with that hope because I'd had an experience with several of the dispensaries in Ann Arbor, in Ypsilanti, in other places. And one of the things that's true is I don't want to drive 20 miles to go someplace that's outside of my hometown when I would really rather do it here. I would rather have it be a safe facility, a regulated facility and be close to home. And I'd rather spend my money close to home. And as a dispensary, I would rather pay my taxes here at home. And I think there's a great opportunity for all of those, growing, processing, transportation, all of those things here. There's no reason that we should go someplace else to do what we can do here. There's no reason we should spend our money someplace else, no reason we should have those businesses in other places and that we shouldn't take advantage of that here. And as a business owner, I think that it's an incredible opportunity for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Hi, my name's Abraham. I'm actually a currently registered and practicing pharmacist. I deal with a lot of long-term care facilities. My pharmacy is a long-term care facility with an infusion center. Most of my patients are actually on pain meds. A lot of them also have medical marijuana cards and that's really how I got to thinking about medical marijuana. In 2007, I have an undergraduate in chemistry, initially from Canada, and I worked with Pfizer in 2007, actually working on the endocannabinoid system. And I've been doing a lot of research on it. I later on did my pharmacy degree and I worked in the United Kingdom and subsequently moved to Michigan where I actually became a pharmacist and I opened up our facility. To speak on the gentleman that asked the question, it was a great question, whether you have to have a medical experience to open up a dispensary. You don't in the state of Michigan. However, the state of Pennsylvania requires you to be a medical professional. A pharmacist has to run actually a dispensary as they thought it was fit for it to be better regulated and have a better control on the material that you handle and you give your patients. At the same time, a big problem with it right now is dosing because there's no standardized dosing on the labeled products and that's what I am working with. A friend of mine at the University of Sciences in Pennsylvania was standardizing labeling, which is the THC to CBD kind of ratio, which is a big error that people make. And it's not standardized, therefore a lot of errors happen in dosing. It doesn't kill people, but it does, it doesn't give them the minimum effective dose that they should be taking and usually end up taking more than they should. So Pennsylvania is one of the states that requires pharmacists to be involved and I think another one is Maine, I believe, I can't be sure, but I know there's several states that do require you to be a pharmacist to actually run a dispensary. And that's it.
Very good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please.
Question is, can a dispensary be part of an existing business?
So the state has indicated that if it grants you a marijuana license, that's going to be the business you're in. You're not, they're not going to allow, I think that question is going to, can you have a restaurant and also sell marijuana? And the state has indicated, and it's up to the state, that they're not going to allow people to double up on different types of licenses. If you identify as a marijuana business, then that's the business you're in. Does that answer that question? That was just part of a, you know, a notification they sent out recently, actually, because people keep asking that question. I think they're concerned about other businesses sort of throwing in marijuana on the side and the state's indicated they're not going to do that.
Anybody else? Welcome anybody to come forward and speak, ask a question. We're here, we have the attorney. We're more than willing to listen to whatever people might have to say.
So this, I was, I just came to listen. I wasn't intending to speak, but there was a question that came up in the presentation. So this is a question from Ms. Wood. So if I understood correctly, the state requires testing of the product. That's one of the licensed categories. But I think you also said the state does not allow municipalities to regulate the product's purity? Is that correct? So how, how does that, could you talk a little bit more about that? How does that work?
Sure. So it is, it's complicated because there's two levels of regulation. So you've got the state, which is going to enforce the requirements for testing, like you just mentioned. And then the local, at the local level, you can license safety compliance facilities, but you can't That was just part of a, you know, a notification they sent out recently, actually, because people keep asking that question. I think they're concerned about other businesses sort of throwing in marijuana on the side and the state's indicated they're not going to do that.
Welcome anybody to come forward and speak, ask a question. We're here, we have the attorney. We're more than willing to listen to whatever people might have to say.
So this, I was, I just came to listen. I wasn't intending to speak, but there was a question that came up in the presentation, so this question from Ms. Wood. So if I understood correctly, the state requires testing of the product, that's one of the license categories. But I think you also said the state does not allow municipalities to regulate the product's purity? Is that correct? So how, how does that, could you talk a little bit more about that? How does that work?
Sure, so it is, it's complicated because there's two levels of regulation. So you've got the state, which is going to enforce the requirements for testing, like you just mentioned. And then the local, at the local level, you can license safety compliance facilities, but you can't have any say in the purity testing or how that health process is going to work. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes.
So you've got the state saying, "We're going to make sure that this gets tested for purity, but we're going to handle that part." That's the state level. The locality can decide whether they're going to license somebody with a state license to do their thing in your city.
Okay, so the state is managing the purity aspect?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And they didn't want us to mess with it, so.
I do have a question, Ms. Wood.
Yep.
I understand that earlier in the year, because there was a lack of supply of medical marijuana product coming to the provisioning centers, that there were some emergency rules promulgated by the state that allowed for caregivers, apparently, to supply medical marijuana to some of the provisioning centers. And at that point, I think that there was not necessarily this control on the purity and standards. Can you comment on that and straighten me out if I'm wrong?
Sure, now there should have been, I mean, safety compliance facilities and requirements have been in place as long as these statutes have been in place. So they certainly should have been in place. So I don't know if you're speaking to specific instances where they weren't followed or if there were specific occurrences that you're referring to or not, but those requirements were in place when that shortage occurred and certainly that marijuana should have gone through that same testing procedure.
Okay, because I read that some seizures that took place in a not-too-distant jurisdiction where apparently the medical marijuana was tainted, that they found it for sale.
Okay, so it sounds like somebody violated the rules.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I may, a few more remarks.
May please.
Just going to wrap this up, folks, unless there are additional questions or comments for the task force, and I'll let Mr. CEO, as the chair, conclude with some closing remarks. I want to thank Jessica again for the outstanding presentation and for addressing a number of good and substantive questions that were raised by audience members. So again, just to be crystal clear on the process, there are surveys on the back table, they can be found online, and the requirement is that they be submitted no later than the close of business on October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. They can be submitted to the clerk's office here at City Hall. One omission on this survey, and my mistake for not catching it, is we would be delighted and we would encourage you to sign and print your name at the bottom of the survey if you complete it. And please, like I said at the beginning of tonight's town hall, if you have neighbors, family, friends, who are interested in this issue and would like to provide feedback, we would strongly encourage participation. The more the merrier. And this feedback will be reviewed and evaluated as part of the formal recommendation that goes to City Council. So again, noting that the surveys must be received no later than the close of business on the twenty-fifth, I expect the medical marijuana task force to reconvene sometime in early November, to go over the surveys, to perhaps discuss, to evaluate the issue further, and then make a formal recommendation to City Council sometime in the subsequent month. So please be looking for that on a council agenda. And I do also want to be clear on just one other thing, because there's many folks in the audience this evening who have been part of the legislative process or who have helped draft or write ordinances and regulatory policies here at the City of Celine. So if the decision is made to move forward with medical marijuana and to opt in, it will take some time to develop the necessary regulatory framework and corresponding ordinances. We try to be very thoughtful here in the City of Celine in that process. While we always hope it will move faster than it does, it's, it can be very slow. And patience is a virtue in this business, so I just wanted to note that for the public record. Again, we appreciate the comments and the feedback this evening, and more importantly, we respect and value that you all took time out of your busy schedules to join us and to share some insight on this, again, important and timely issue. Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one clarification, this questionnaire can be dropped at any of the drop boxes. There's one at the front desk, there's one out here in the parking lot, there's one in the parking lot over behind Max. And they will be collected there by the city clerk. So if you drop in any one of those drop boxes, you will get back to the city clerk and we will have the advantage of having it included in the survey results. So again, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for your courtesy and your patience and listening to everybody and their point of view, and I'm very glad that we had this little forum. So thank you again for coming and sharing your points of view, and we wish you all well.